Everyone was standing for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge act.
We kind of have to follow our, not just because it's towards to the Thanksgiving season. We are thankful for the many things you've been part of. We're sitting here with a budget that, Lord, that is above what we were taking in for many years, Lord. And we have means to do things for our citizens and our visitors, Lord. We certainly want to pray for the who's lost loved ones, Lord, the Raw family, the Bowden family, the Wright family, the Reynolds family, Lord. And Lord, please be with all the people that are taking care of the people. Because I know each one of those, Lord, that had special people, Lord, that loved them and stood out for them to their very last breath. And, Lord, we just pray for those people too. We give them comfort, Lord. And, Lord, we certainly want to thank you, Lord, for the symbols of your love that are on our front lawn. And, Lord, my prayer is that there are always good people up here, Lord, that will welcome that to be. Lord, just be with each and every one of us, Lord, as we make decisions, Lord. May we do everything that's pleasing to you, Lord. We strongly pray for our military, all of our employees, Lord. But as I said, protection around them, Lord, especially our EMS and our police officers, Lord, but not just here, but everywhere, Lord. Please just go with us and guide us in everything we do while we ask these things in Jesus' precious name before we say amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I'm going to open the public comments section up for the regular meeting. First one on the list here is Ms. Donna Leonard.
Donna Leonard, 6415 Leonard Lane. Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to raise several concerns that all come down to one theme: unfinished projects and a lack of timely follow through. First, the mayor's photograph. Traditionally, the mayor's picture should be added to the hallway at the start of each term. Mayor Leonard served for eight years, has been out of office almost a year, and no photo. Waiting nearly a decade to display a simple photograph is unnecessary. If professional photos take time, a temporary photo should be posted when the term begins. What's the holdup? Second, transparency. Committee meetings used to be broadcast. Many now occur across the hall instead of in the council chambers, and those that are home have no opportunity to see those committee meetings. Citizens can no longer easily hear discussions, and consent approval of all committee reports as a single bulk item removes clarity. I do not like the new consent approval of all committee meetings. Reading long packets is not the same as hearing deliberations, and it leaves residents unsure of which council may be able to contact about our concerns. I urge you to resume broadcasting all committee meetings and return to verbal committee reports. Why the reduction in transparency? Third, the town website. Years ago, I suggested forming a task force because the site is outdated, difficult to use, and in need of new content and images. If progress is being made and hasn't been communicated, what's the holdup of a modern functional website? Fourth, our parks. Memorial Park's baseball field has needed attention for at least 10 years. It is rarely used for baseball and would better serve the community as a multi-use recreational area: volleyball, soccer, frisbee, golf, and more. I previously suggested inviting the Akamet County Parks and Recreation Director to come visit and offer his professional input. Nothing has moved forward. Adding dirt to the field is not a real plan. A multi-use redesign is needed. What's the holdup? Fifth, Brianna's Kindness Park. Council approved a hangout structure for older children. I met with the town manager and the Public Works Director over two years ago to determine a location suitable for that. After a full year with no action, I asked about the timeline for completion, only to be told the project was now not possible despite council approval. If problems arise, shouldn't that be brought back to the committee for solutions and back to council to tell them what they have approved is just dead in the water? Plans were also discussed for a lending library and a photo op mural on the bathroom building outside the wall. Painting for that was volunteered by Marcy McComb. Plans only work when they're actually implemented. What's the holdup? Six, dog parks unshaved. 2024 Friends of the Dog Park requested an additional shade. It was approved by council and ordered, but sat in the public works for over a year. When it was finally installed, instead of being an additional one, it replaced the old shade because it had been damaged. So they got no second one. The approved improvement was never delivered. Seven, committee appointments. For five years, I have asked that the Recreation and Community Enhancement Committee return to its previous structure of three citizens. It should be as simple as advertising openings, accepting letters of interest, and voting. Yet today, I remain the only citizen member. What's the holdup? Lastly, the Carnival Grounds parking lot. Three years ago, I asked the town to explore improvements. I was told this would require discussions with the fire company, which leases the land. Recently, I asked a fire company member whether those conversations ever happened. They had not, to his knowledge. This waterfront property is underused, poorly maintained. What's the holdup? I know this list sounds negative, and that is not my intention. My goal is progress. I care deeply about our community, and I appreciate the service each of you provides. But important projects and approved plans are stalling, sometimes for years. I urge the council to take action in a positive, organized, and timely way for the benefit of the island. Thank you for listening and for your continued dedication to Shinkatik Island.
Thank you, Donna. Barbara, are you speaking on this one or?
I want to speak.
Public hearing.
I'm putting her name back. I'm going to talk. I'm going to get mad or something.
I got you on both of them.
I know. I know where I'm at. I just don't remember the one. Barbara Walker, 5335 Merritt Drive, Shinkatik. You don't need to really speak on this, but I want to speak on Donna and everything that she said. I have been to some of these meetings where she said this, and I've been home and listened to them while she said this. And it's the truth. It's just the truth. It's, we've got past problems that's not been taken care of. And I know you're going to have new problems, and that's fine with me. But the past problems, like she's talked about, needs to be taken care of. And if I can help in any way, y'all, I'm calling, as long as it involves a paintbrush.
All right, that's all I've got for this public comment. I'll entertain a motion for agenda adoption.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. McComb, second by Ms. Ellen to adopt tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. All right, next, I'm going to open up the public hearing for the South Main Street property purchase. First one on that list is Mr. Baker, Stewart.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Stewart Baker, 5156 Serenity Lane. Regarding your proposal to purchase a two-acre parcel for an additional waterfront park, all that you have presented to the public thus far is the location and purchase price of $2.25 million and potential uses for the property. I have not heard any projections on the cost of developing such parcel, such as initial planning costs, what would the park be used for, utility expenses, an installation, sewage facility, security, added insurance exposure, walkway and parking development for the proposed use that's decided on, which is going to be necessary to determine how much of the property remains for actual utilization when you take the parking area out of it. And I'm sure there's others I've missed as well in this discussion, such as the existing ball kit that's there. What's the condition of that ball kit? Ball kit's not cheap. That's a major expense if you have to get in and do that, not to mention the permitting process that I know Jean Wayne's very familiar with, dealing with federal permits. Nor have I heard any estimated cost to maintain the property after its development, which would be an ongoing annual expense to the town, such as Memorial Park and the other multiple parks that we already have. I assume it may be something you may refer to the Public Works Department. However, they are already understaffed and have projects pending. That's already been pointed out here tonight in previous comments, and to add another responsibility to their workload may result in further project delays and having to let go of expectations you may have of them, of the department. For these reasons, I oppose this expenditure and urge you to not approve such purchase until you have completed all due diligence and have all the information regarding this proposed project so you can adequately present the total package and expense to the taxpayers of the town prior to removing additional property from the tax base. It appears that the only thing that has been accomplished to date is agreeing on a purchase price. In my opinion, that is not sufficient actions to justify spending $2.25 million of the town reserve funds when there are many more uses it could be spent on for the greater benefit of the town than an additional park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stewart.
Do you want this one?
Yes, sir.
Christina.
Tina Zoller, 3450 Fort Main Street. I spoke about this at the Town Council meeting, but I disagree with Mr. Stewart. Sorry. I think this is an excellent use of our town resources. We need to preserve some of our waterfront. I know that we took recently some action to help keep some of the east side safe. I think we need a little more on the, especially south, western side of the island. People like to watch sunsets. That's a main reason why people want to walk around on Main Street and drive up and down Main Street. They're looking at that sunset. And I would love for them to have a place that has a safe parking and/or sitting area where they can. We don't want to make it a town where all you see are townhouses, hotels, and Airbnbs all along the water where you can't even sit and look at the sunset. And I know one of my neighbors recently complained that she drove up and down Main Street and she couldn't see the sunset anymore with her husband. They're unable to get out and walk. So, you know, I'm fortunate enough to have a front porch and a dock, and I can sit out there and look at it. But I know that that's the main thing. We do not need to necessarily develop that property. But purchasing it protects us from having townhouses or a hotel or some other giant monstrosity thrust upon us. I'm sorry, I am not a big fan of the development that has happened in the last few years, mainly because I see it as removing community members and bringing in a lot of day trippers slash short-term visitors who come and go up and down Main Street, causing a lot of road traffic and not a lot of community membership. We want people that come and stay and enjoy the town, but also who live here and can look out at the sunset once in a while. Thanks. Thank you.
Donna Leonard.
Good evening again. Donna Leonard, 6415 Leonard Lane. I don't have my thoughts quite so together as I did for the last thing. I needless to say, as you all know, am all for parks. Recreation other than the beach is very important. However, if I had a choice, I would say we have a bigger need, which is workforce housing and housing for AMTs and teachers and other professionals who can't afford housing here on Shinkatik. So if I had a choice to spend $2.5 million, I'd try to tackle that problem because it certainly is a desperate need for people that we want to attract to Shinkatik. So my thoughts on this proposal are that something just doesn't seem right. That the public is told that the town has a letter of intent by way of a Facebook post. First, I'd heard of it, and I try to keep informed. I watch the meetings as much as I can. And having been part of the acquisition of Robert Reed Park and the development of Robert Reed Park, I really enjoyed hearing Chris last council meeting talk about being in his bedroom upstairs, listening through the register, and that his father and my father held on to that property downtown for 10 years. No decision was made in that 10 years. And so now we're faced with, town of Shinkatik has submitted a letter of intent to purchase a $2.5 million property, and the public hadn't heard a word about it. That just, something just seems off there to me. I can't help but wonder where this idea came from. Was it one of you? Was it the developer? Was it the developer? Was it a citizen? Just out of the blue, oh, we intend to spend $2.5 million? You know, a local, Donna Riske's got property down there for sale, as she did with Cat and Bob's. Same waterfront, maybe not, I did understand Mike to say there was new bulkhead in the property that you're looking to purchase. But it does seem kind of as Mr. Baker kind of implied last time, kind of, we're putting a nice recreational area right in the middle of the two developments down there. Personally speaking, I would like to say something that I've thought of for a long time when I hear about all the problems with South Main, is that South Main probably never should have been developed in the first place before the first truckload of dirt was ever brought in down there in the 60s. And now we're trying to save what never should have been developed. If the park is purchased and named, I think it should be Cat and Bob's Fish and Camp Park and not Bob Palmer, because not many people knew that Cat and Bob's last name was Palmer. And it was a fishing camp. How many big fat flounder have been caught off the front of that waterfront? And if we're naming parks for people that made a difference in Shinkatig, he made a difference before we were ever a tourist town. You know, I wonder what the haste is about it. If it took 10 years for the town to decide to do something downtown, why are we now doing something within, or one month, they're having this, this meeting two weeks after it was first brought to this council chambers? If you do it, I urge you to seek out professional help. With Robert Reed Park, we had the help of the Acomet County Northampton, or Acomet-Northampton County Planning District Commission. Kat Edwards was, was an employee of them at the time. She escorted us by the hand through the process of getting professional plans for the Robert Reed Downtown Park. She escorted us through getting grants. I won't say it was easy. That's my time.
It's mine.
I got more to say, but my time's up. So thank you for having us tonight, and good luck with making this decision.
Thank you, Donna. Barbara, you're up.
I'm in session. Bye, Sarah. You're good.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I have letters.
Oh, yes, that's correct. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I do have some letters that were sent in with the request that we read them. And the first is, ladies and gentlemen, we are totally in favor of that parcel being acquired by the town and made into a park that all people could enjoy for the following reasons. The town missed a big opportunity when it did not acquire Captain Bob's. Now look what there is there. Not really in character with the vision of an era, area that appreciates nature. My wife and I came here in 1977 on our honeymoon and fell in love with the laid-back nature of Shinkatig. It was not a place for just the wealthy, but for all. Places of that nature are getting fewer and fewer. Because we loved the place, we have always supported local businesses. We camped at Tom's Cove Campground for many years in a tent. We had fun despite being on a budget. One of our big pleasures was going to the bakery in town, getting a coffee and maybe a pastry, and going to Captain Bob's to watch the sunset. We would buy a launch pass just so we could be there for sunset. We always bought stuff there to support him and then Donna after he passed. We did eventually get a boat and launch there often. It would be a shame to see one of the last pieces of open waterfront become private land with no access to the sunsets with a direct view of the west and beautiful marshes beyond. There is so much potential there for a really great park. Sunset viewing, boat watching could be shared with version of Key West. That is reason enough, but when you add in the possibility of a fishing pier that reaches good water, that holds fish, and the possibilities of small festivals or folk-type concerts or even food truck events, the uses become endless. We have attended small concerts and outdoor movie events sponsored by CCA in the downtown park, but the outside venue that blares music all the time cranks the speakers up, which detracts from those sponsored events. It becomes hard to hear movies, et cetera. We feel the purchase of this property has great potential and very few drawbacks. In addition, it encourages people to stay local and spend their money at local businesses. There is carryout potential for brick-and-mortar restaurants to increase business there. Thank you for your consideration of these thoughts. Tom and Jenny Genie Cutter, non-renting homeowners on Shinkatig. Dear Members of Town Council, I am writing to formally express my full support for the town's decision to pursue the acquisition of the large waterfront parcel on South Main Street. This initiative reflects a thoughtful and forward-looking commitment to the long-term vitality, livability, and economic balance of our island. Although my professional work centers on real estate and development, I believe strongly that not every valuable parcel should be driven toward private maximization. Strategic municipal ownership plays an essential role in maintaining community identity, preserving irreplaceable view corridors, and ensuring that our land use planning serves both present and future generations with intention and clarity. The South Main Street parcel represents one of the few remaining opportunities to secure waterfront space that benefits the entire island rather than a select few. Our residents and visitors deserve the opportunity to enjoy the same unobstructed vistas and accessible shoreline that so many of us were fortunate to experience growing up. A well-designed public park on this site would provide meaningful recreational aesthetic and cultural value while also reinforcing the town's stewardship over one of its most defining natural assets. This type of municipality-controlled frontage has the potential to elevate surrounding property values, encourage compatible growth patterns, and strengthen the overall coherence of our land use framework. I commend the town for recognizing this rare nature, the rare nature of this opportunity, and for engaging in proactive, responsible acquisition rather than reactive decision-making. Protecting this parcel for public use demonstrates leadership grounded in sound planning principles, community benefit, and long-term vision. Thank you for your continued commitment to the thoughtful governance of our island. I appreciate your consideration and stand ready to support this initiative in any way that is helpful. Sincerely, Megan Oliver Clarkson.
I do not approve of the town's buying the lot on South Main Street for $2 million. I would rather the town pursue the purchase of Steve's cottages and turn that into housing for first-time responders and teachers and first responders. I'm sorry, teachers and first responders need housing, and the first responders would include doctors who can never find housing on here affordably, and that's always hard to get doctors to work on Shinkatig, nurses, police officers, et cetera. So hopefully Jake can speak for me at the meeting tonight as I'm out of town, and that is Denise Savage.
Jane Wolf.
I'm sorry, Jane Wolf.
It's me.
And that's all I have.
Last, at our regular council meeting, Mike had a presentation about the possible uses of the park. And if you want to go through those park or open space, whatever we're going to decide to call it if we move forward, do you want to go through that again?
I can if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. The town's proposed acquisition of a park and conversion of about 2.5 acres on South Main Street. The goals and objectives will be to transform the underutilized two-acre parcel into multipurpose public waterfront destination that supports recreation, environmental education, and community gathering. Prioritize public access and sustainability consistent with small-town coastal character. Maintain beautiful and functional outdoor public places which provide a shared sense of belonging for Shinkatig residents, business owners, property owners, and visitors, and ensure opportunities for public access to the waterfront and preserve open space in rapidly developing southern end of Main Street. I might add that those come directly from the comprehensive plan that's been approved by council, and that's revised every five years and is in the current, in the process of currently being revised. Past and present conditions, over 400, this property has over 400 linear feet of accessible waterfront. The last remaining available large tract on undeveloped land along Shinkatig Channel. It was formerly used as construction material storage yard, but mostly has remained vacant, and it is prime real estate for potential town use within the rapidly expanding South Main Street area. Proposed purchase price is $2.25 million. There will be no additional tax increases. To pay for this property, it will be funded from town reserves, and the project is shovel-ready. The lot is already cleared, filled, and ready for construction. Possible uses, viewing area for board, viewing area, boardwalk, observation decks to look at rocket launches, sunsets, boats, wildlife, stargazing, fishing, crabbing opportunities, wedding venues, food trucks, concerts, festivals, picnic areas, non-motorized boating, and stand-up paddleboard launching, public art and historical heritage installations, and include a natural shoreline feature to prevent erosion, create additional habitat, create a buffer area for the bulkhead, and inherently help with flood mitigation. As an example of what could be done, we cited Robert Reed Park downtown. Looking at the pictures on the board, you'll see the way the property appeared in the late 70s, early 80s, wherein it was used by American Original to unload clam boats and re-provision those boats for more offshore trips. Looking at it today, it's 1.0 acres located in the middle, on Main Street in the middle of town. It was purchased by the town in 2002 for $575,000. Its former use included normal wharf operations for ferries, mailboats, clam boats, unloading, and other shipping traffic, and there was no public recreation space or direct access to the waterfront on Main Street outside of Curtis Mary Harbor at the time. Looking at Robert Reed today, it features, include a pavilion, pergola, benches, love, love chairs, boardwalk landscaping, lighting, boat slips, and a fishing pier. Different groups hold concerts there, there's yoga in the morning. There's all kinds of things. I don't know how many people have seen the pictures on the love chairs. It's very popular. The town has plans to install floating docks there that would encourage boating traffic and transients to stop there and further patronize the buildings, the businesses downtown. It hosts, again, outdoor movies, concerts, stargazing workshops, yoga, and various festivals and activities, draws thousands of guests annually. That pretty much winds up our presentation.
Thank you. Considered a public purchase, public property purchase ordinance. Mike, you want to read that?
Absolutely. The following, following the public hearing, the purchase of the South Main Street property council will consider adopting an ordinance to negotiate a purchase contract. The ordinance does not commit the town to purchasing the property, but allows the, our attorney and the town manager to begin negotiating a purchase contract with the owner. It also appropriates and approves $2.25 million for the purchase of the property. Likewise, the signing of the purchase contract does not obligate the town to purchasing the property. The signing of the negotiated contract will not happen before the December council meeting and could even be delayed longer if negotiations are still ongoing. The ordinance reads as follows. Whereas the town of Shinkatig, Virginia is authorized by the Code of Virginia 15.21800 and 15.21803 to acquire or purchase any real property for any public use. Whereas the town council has determined that it is in the best interest of the town's citizens to acquire certain real property located at the town's waterfront identified in tax member, tax map numbers 45A6 and 45A7A collectively called the property for the purpose, for public purposes including but not limited to recreation, public access, shoreline management, and other lawful municipal purposes. Whereas the town of Shinkatig and Secrets, RELC, a Virginia limited liability company, have entered into a certain letter of intent dated August 28, 2025, but not executed until October 7, a copy of which is attached here as Exhibit A, setting forth the key transaction terms pursuant to which the town proposes to acquire the property from the seller, including without limitation a purchase price of $2,250,000. Whereas an informal presentation regarding the proposed purchase was made at a public hearing on November 3, 2025, whereas advertisement for the public hearing was made on November 7, 2025, whereas public hearing was held on November 20, 2025. Whereas the town council desires to authorize the acquisition of the property for the purchase price and to authorize the town manager to negotiate, finalize, and execute a purchase and sale agreement incorporating the terms of the letter of intent and such other additional terms as are reasonably necessary or appropriate to protect the town's interest and to execute all related closing documents necessary to complete the transaction. Now therefore, be it ordained by the town council that the town of Shinkatig, Virginia, this 20th day of November, 2025, that the town is authorized to acquire the property from the seller for the purchase price, subject to the execution of the purchase and sale agreement, and to accept the same. The town manager, after consultation with the council, is authorized to negotiate, finalize, and execute the purchase agreement in accordance with the terms of the letter and intent incorporated, the letter of intent and incorporating such additional items, conditions, covenants, representations, warranties, and provisions as the town manager deems reasonably necessary or appropriate to protect the town's interest. The town manager is also authorized to execute all closing documents and to take such actions as are necessary or proper to complete the acquisition of the property from the seller. The town hereby approves and appropriates the sum of $2,250,000 as a purchase price for the property, together with customary closing costs for the purpose of acquiring the property. And James B. Rixey III Esquire of the law firm Woods Rogers Vendavon or Black, PLC, qualified attorney-at-law, was selected to approve the form of the deed conveying the property to the town to the extent required by law. Adopted an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of the members elected to the town council of the town of Shinkatig, Virginia on November 20, 2025.
Thank you. Before we go any further, Mike, will you read the timeline?
Yes, ma'am.
That you set forth for us?
We have developed a timeline of the sale of the property and what that, how those events will take place. On 10/7/2025, we signed the letter of intent. 11/3, the purchase presentation to the public was made at council meeting. On November 7, an advertisement for a public hearing was given to the paper. On the 20th, today, council held a public hearing on the purchase of the property. Also on the 20th, the council will adopt the ordinance to negotiate the purchase contract by December 18. It is anticipated that we will execute the purchase contract. That could be delayed if the negotiations are still ongoing. At the sale of the contract, if it happens on December 18, or whatever day it does happen, the due diligence period begins, and that period extends for 90 days. At any time during the due diligence period, if for any reason or no reason at all, the town decides not to purchase the property, they will inform the seller in writing, and the seller returns the deposit, and the deal is off. On 20/23, within five days of the signing of the purchase contract, the town will transfer $50,000 to deposit in escrow for the sale. Also on 20/23, the seller will transmit all property documents in his possession to the town for examination. Also on 20/23, at the start of the due diligence period, the town will be conducting an environmental assessment, title search, and survey. And by February 23, 2026, the environmental assessment, title search, and survey should be complete by March 18, 30, I'm sorry, 90 days after the due diligence period begins. The due diligence period will end at such time, if the town has not said they do not want to purchase the property, the deposit will be a guarantee of the sale, and the sale will proceed, or the town will lose its deposit.
Thank you.
Also, I might add, the town has the right to close the due diligence period before the 90-day allotted time ends, and this would move up anticipated closing date, which would be 30 days following the due diligence period, which would happen potentially on April 18 of 2026.
All right. Before we go into the property purchase ordinance, discussion from council, Ms. Ellen, start with you.
As Tina.
Catch you off guard?
Yeah. I wasn't, I was thinking something else. Tina was talking about how people have gone up and down the shore trying to find a place to look at the sunset. A friend I just acquired said across the street was this, it's a nice, looks like a parking lot over there, and the neighbor wasn't home, but these people pulled in with their camper, and they got out, and they were walking all out and just looking at the sunset. And the lady hollered over, and she says, "I'm sorry, but those people aren't there." And the ones, the visitors answer back, says, "Well, I thought this was a park. We're just looking at the sunset." And she said, "No, I'm sorry, but they're not home, but they, that's not a park." And he said, "Okay, we'll leave." So I agree with what's been said here tonight. When that beach opens up, people that cannot walk is no longer going to be able to ride to the beach. it's no longer going to be over to ride to the beach and look out at the ocean or eat a sandwich while they're looking at it. It's all going to change. And this, as far as that piece of property, it will be for everybody, for our grandchildren, our great-great-grandchildren. If we don't preserve things, it's going to be gone. Just like Donna said, her parents, Chris's parents, I remember all that and it was almost sold to individuals before they, those people that owned it worked a deal with the town to save it and it's a beautiful park. The same thing is as Leonard Park, that's a beautiful park. The town of Schenckittig purchased that, it was over a million and some dollars for that property. And since we did, Icahmac County has said many a time, why couldn't we have sold that? And they would have for development. So open space, we need open space. I agree with Donna on housing, I'm on the Housing Alliance. My opinion is it'd be some nice land over there where Edital owned to put places for people to live. But land is very expensive on here and as they've said at the housing place, very likely that you'll ever see it here because of the value of the property. So that's all I got to say, that's enough.
Mr. Ball?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of having an area for residents and visitors alike to be able to see the water. You know, as I've said on multiple occasions in these chambers, I've been to many communities where you can be on an island, not even though you're on an island, it's completely walled in with development and building. I think the process here needs to be, everybody needs to understand our process. The letter of intent basically allowed us to start this process. It was like our starting block. And I think even in our timeline, Mike, you referenced contract. It's really the signing of the purchase agreement.
Correct.
Right, not the contract. Because the purchase agreement then allows us to start our due diligence period, where we start to look into everything and verify everything and check the condition of the ball kid, look at what our cost is going to be, look at how much it's going to cost us to actually do anything with the property, if that's a phase type rollout and so forth and the costs associated with this. And then at the end of that due diligence period is when the contract's actually signed or the deed's transferred. But you know, my reservations, and I'll be honest, right now only occur with the price in that, you know, shovel-ready is a big deal. You know, if it's not shovel-ready, if the ball kid needs to be replaced, if it can even be replaced, you know, if they're going to make us put riprap in, if we have to replace it, so forth. There's a lot of variables in there that we definitely need to look at during the 90 days before we finalize this thing. And I think that's what we're doing here. The council's doing now, is now is when we start our research and we start our study and we start really looking into things. And you know, I really want to see what the proposed use is going to be on paper as well as the cost associated with that and an assessment of the soil down there and make sure nothing will sneak up on us there and so forth. So, but in general, I think it's a good idea moving forward. You know, we're talking about a 100-year project, 200-year project. And that's until Chris Heine comes and talks in January and it may only be like a 50-year project. I was just saying.
Mr. Ralph?
Yeah, I think it's important to note, the ball kid is not new ball kid. So when we continue to bring that up about ball kid and that's a concern, it's because of that. The ball kid, we need to do our due diligence here. So have someone come down, examine the ball kid, give us life expectancy, also the waterfront out front, you know. What can we use it for? Is it strictly going to be limited to a pier? I know coming in a cat and out of cat and bob's now. I mean, you pretty much, you've got to have a tide to get in and out or a smaller boat. So what are we restricted to as far as the water's concerned there? So yeah, I, I think I agree. I mean, it is, it's a great piece of property. I know it'll be used for weddings, everything else. But in turn, I'd like for us to do our due diligence here and get opinions on what we can actually do and not do with the property. We're only speculating now, you know, of what we're looking at doing. Because we could go in, that ball kid's got a life expectancy of three years. They might look at us and say, "We're not going to grant you the two-foot wetlands." They may say, "We want you to go back with 11 shoreline," which at that point, then you've got to put, you know, a boardwalk over top of that and you're really getting into some cost with all that nodes, you know, Gene's going through there. So I would like to have during this period of time, a lot more information on the property itself and what we can do and, you know, if you all remember over the years, it was, it was a lot of stuff on that property. And I just think that we need to see what it would take to get it ready as a park. If you look, it's been sitting vacant for a couple of years now and it ain't the prettiest green grass on it. You know what I mean? What's it going to take to grow the grass on it and get it to where we need to be? How much is that going to be? So just the cost that would incur, I think that it's important and we owe that to taxpayers to certainly do our due diligence on that.
Mr. McCombe?
So, Loesman said tonight, points on both sides that you can certainly agree with. But at the same time, I have some reservations about this. Number one, we do have a lot of public parks now, a lot of public access. To Donna's point, when she was giving her opinions and commentary, we have parks now that need work. Memorial Park is, is an area that certainly needs at least a partial redo. She spoke about the baseball field, which we hope to turn into a multipurpose field. That's certainly one area there. She also spoke about the parking area in front of the carnival ground. We've talked about that as a body as well as the enhancements there, working with the fire company to come up with a plan that would be reasonable for everyone. Potential of a boardwalk area down there, again, areas that people could use, parkings in place to view sunsets, things of that nature. We've also talked about enhancing, extending the boardwalk area that goes through downtown, that borders the waterfront. Again, another great vantage point. Parking is existing, services already are available there. It abuts Robert Reed Park, another, you know, great public access area. And then also you've got the Waterman's Memorial area down to Curtis Mary Harbor, which could also be further enhanced with seating and things of that nature. Parking already exists with the harbor, again, that we could potentially use for vantage point for things like sunsets and observing wildlife and all that type of thing. I think Stewart made a lot of good points as far as all the underlying costs that potentially come away from this, whether it be walkways, sidewalks, parking, you know, how much of that is going to take away from the additional footprint of that area? And then, you know, when you talk about $2.25 million, you're not only taking that off the tax rolls, but right now we're earning somewhere around $90,000 a year in interest from the investment of that money in the LGIP investment pools at somewhere around 4%, 4.5% interest. That's also another important impact, even outside of the taxes that we currently incur off of that is the interest that we're making off that money. I just don't think I'm comfortable spending what equates to somewhere around one-fifth of our total reserves on a single piece of property that we don't have a clear path as far as what we're going to do with right now. And you take into other consideration all the other projects that have been brought up, not only in this meeting, but in past meetings, everything from drainage to flood control, needed work on roads and culverts and things of that nature. And I just don't feel like it's an equitable purchase for the town for right now. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Taylor?
I'm probably most surprised, you know I am for economic development. And I would surprise anybody, we have to have economic development so we can pay our employees their yearly increases in salary and their yearly increases in their medical costs. And we want to, we have great employees, don't let nobody fool you. But I've kind of got the thing like what Megan says. I do think it's forward-thinking, not just for us, because like you say, we already knew it was going to be a restaurant going to be there. And I'm not saying that's not the end of the world having another restaurant, by no means. But I'm going to say, I do think it's forward-thinking to do it, to purchase it. Because people want to think, like I say, and much as anything is downtown, Robert Reed Park, it's only acre, it gets used and gets used nicely. It really does. This is twice as big. And if you look at the purchase of Robert Reed Park, it was $575 back in 2002. Twice as big, it puts it into how much increase in salary, I mean, how much land cost has been since 2002. 2.25, it sounds like a lot of money and it is, I promise you. But even compared to that, double the $575 times two, because one's two acres and one's one acre. And how much that is, comparatively, it's actually a better bargain. I think you're going to find out, like you said, I've done some checking on what was under there, the thing itself and talked to some people. Only thing I know that was under there was there was some burning going on there for stuff, but take my word for it, ashes will turn to, go back to soul. So I don't have a big concern, and we are going to check it anyway. So we're going to do our due diligence, make sure that it is. But I, I think it's comparatively, I think it's forward-thinking, not just for us, but for people in the future, because if we do everything and take my word for it, we know for a fact, I am for economic development and I will stand strong for it. You know what I mean? We've got to have it. Because if our employees want their 2% raise, we've got to produce it for them or we've got to raise taxes every year, every year because salary increases come every year. But I'm going to say, it's going to sound stupid, but I think it's forward-thinking and take my word for it, I think somebody will thank us for it for years to come. And we're very blessed, like I checked with the thing, we've been very blessed to have budget surpluses. Very blessed. We have budget surpluses during COVID. How many communities can say that? How many communities can say, can say that they had budget surpluses during COVID? I'm just talking, not talking about ARPA funds either. We're very blessed. So I, I think that we do something for our community and not just that, but for our visitors. Because guess what? The surpluses came from our visitors, let's just say it like it is. We need to, we need to be precious to our visitors. And we do have great visitors. As, as, as everybody has, there's always a bad buck, but what I'm saying is we do have good, and they love it here. And I think we should have something in the future for them and for our own. And I don't want to worry about, you know, 2.25 million is a lot of money. And you're probably the one thinking that I'd be against it, but I'm going to see how I feel about it.
Mr. Savage?
I appreciate all the comments that's been made this evening. I think all the comments have been justifiable. And I'm hearing the comments from the other council members. And I really feel we have to indeed do diligence regarding the property. We need to have a plan in line, as Mr. Baker stated. I think it was imperative to be owed to the taxpayers of this community. As far as the property itself, it's a great piece of property. And, you know, I know it's been on the line itself for a couple of years, but I just, I'm just weary of the type of development that may, may go there. This is purchased from the town, it's, the town's, we live in a beautiful town. The visitors love us, they come here, they want to enjoy themselves. And as what was mentioned earlier and, you know, what happens to the beach? And, you know, we're not sure what's going to happen to the beach. We don't know what's going to happen down the line. You know, we've got Chris Heine's coming in here and is going to do a presentation for us. But at the same time, we need to, we need to be, well, that's what Gina stated as well, is be forward-thinking. What's going to be the best thing for the town down the road? The price is high. We, we need to consider really thinking about the price and what additional prices is going to be going on with that property. And we know there is going to be a fair amount of additional, additional things that needs to be done to that property, as was mentioned, as far as the ball kitting replaced and some of the other things. And I just think we need to just kind of step back and kind of put our ducks in the row and that type of thing before we jump into it.
Thank you. So my turn. I, I love this piece of property. I was down there today. It's, and as soon as I pulled up down there, there was this workboat going by. And I just, just stood there and just watching it. And I've seen workboats go by a million times. But I just watched it go by and it was very peaceful and very serene. And I think this is a good opportunity for the town. I dare say that when the town purchased the Robert Reed Park property for $575, I knew there was naysayers then and that was a lot of money then. But look how beautiful that has turned out. And look how much that part gets utilized. This piece of property has the potential to be very much a showpiece for the island. Looking at the overhead shot of Robert Reed Park, you know, and knowing what it looked like before, and a lot of people in this room knew what it looked like before with the American Original boats, which were great at the time, I loved them too. But unfortunately, they had to move on. We have to give something back to our future generation here. Chris had mentioned, you know, feeling almost like being in a fishbowl in other communities. And it can feel like that, when, when you can't pull over to look at the water or sit there for a little while and, and look at what you grew up with and what people come here for. It's, it's not fun, it really isn't. You know, a lot of people in this room that's been born and raised here, we've seen so many changes, so many changes. And, and some for the good, some for the bad, some are just because. And I know you cannot stop development and nor should we. But you've heard me say many times that, you know, I feel like we have to be responsible with it. Going forward with this property purchase ordinance is going to allow this town to do the due diligence as been talked about. How much is it going to cost to maintain? What's, you know, what can we use it for? How much is, is it going to be to get it to where it needs to be and things like that? So it's, you know, it's a lot of steps that have to take place, just like it was with Robert Reed Park, just like it was with Breanna's Park. So I, I feel very strongly about this piece of property. My dear friends have heard me say more than once, my favorite place on Schenckittig is South Main. You can sit there and watch the storms roll in, you can watch the workboats go by, you can watch beautiful sunsets, the rocket launches, there's so many good things about South Main. So I'm really hoping that this works out for the town and for our residents and our visitors. But we'll see going forth how it goes. Right now I entertain a motion from council to move forward with the property purchase ordinance that will allow us to do our due diligence on this property. This does not commit the town to purchasing the property. This just allows us to do our, our due diligence on what we have to do beforehand, before we get to that point. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, I make motion to move forward.
Got a motion by Mr. Bott, second by Ms. Ellen, to move forward with the property purchase ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes? Yes?
Nay.
Yes, yes, yes. So moved. Thank you. All right. Next up, considered budget and personnel committee recommendation, Mr. McCombe?
Thank you, Mayor Bowden. At its November 13th meeting, the Budget Personnel Committee considered a new scholarship in memory of former mayor Jack Tar, who had 20-plus years of continuous public service to this town. The scholarship would be dedicated to providing funds to current students at CHS. The sex scholarship would be dedicated to providing funds to current students at CHS who are considering further to education and training in the building trades. Um, the town of Shengte would administer, administer the scholarship and, and assistance selecting applicants for this privately funded scholarship, which currently stands at over twenty-three thousand dollars raised. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, uh, administration of the scholarship by the town of Shengte. Council is asked to approve this and support the administration of the John H. Jack Tar Scholarship.
Got a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. McCombe, second by Ms. Ellen, to, um,
To approve.
To approve it, yeah, to approve the Jack Tar Memorial Scholarship to administer it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Um, you're up again.
All right. Um, as November thirteenth meeting, the Budget Personnel Committee voted to recommend an increase in the employee Christmas bonus. The current bonus is two hundred dollars for full-time employees and one hundred dollars for, for, for part-time employees. The committee voted to recommend an increase to both, uh, to both, bringing the part-time level to one twenty-five and the full-time level to two fifty. Council is asked to consider this increase in Christmas bonus for all employees.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion, Mr. Savage, second by Ms. Ellen, to move forward with the Christmas employee bonus, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. All right, I am up next. Um, Public Safety Committee, uh, met at October seventh to consider the purchase of standalone radar speed signs. Now, before I go any further, let me make this very, very clear. This is not, uh, speed signs that's going to mail you a ticket in the mail, okay? These are not that. These are speed signs that when you go down the street and you go more than twenty-five, they're going to flash at you to remind you, slow down, that's all they are. Um, standalone radar speed signs that would raise motors' awareness of their speed in sensitive areas. The cost of each radar sign is three thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. The committee recommended the expenditure of the Public Safety Fund for the purchase of these signs. Right now, the recommendation is to purchase two of them to use as trials and to follow up with additional ones if the trials are successful. As of October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the balance of the public safety account is eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Council is asked to approve the expenditure of seventy-five hundred from the public safety reserves for the purchase of these two devices. Motion, Ms. Ellen? Second by Mr. McCombe to move forward with the purchase of two of the speed signs. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nope, one nay.
I don't like speed signs.
I don't like speeders.
There you go.
That's enough.
All right, uh, next up, Consider Public Works, uh, Works Committee Recommendations, Ms. Ellen.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. November the fourth, a Public Works Committee, um, considered a recommendation by staff to repair the existing reinforced concrete pipe culvert on Maddox Boulevard at Eel Creek. This culvert has been demonstrating signs of failure for the past few years and is in need of replacement. In addition, the culvert is significantly undersized and should be eventually replaced with a much larger structure that would allow more water to pass. A more substantial structure would also allow more efficient vehicle, bike, and pedestrian traffic, uh, travel along Maddox Boulevard. Complete replacement for this adequate structure is estimated to cost one point six five million. Would take the better part of a year to design, bid, and then build. The staff recommendation is to repair the existing culvert pipe to maintain the integrity of the crossing until a proper design and procurement process could be completed. The repair would also allow additional time to obtain available grant funding for the project. The repair is estimated at two hundred thousand dollars. It has a fifty-year warranty. Funds from the town's annual U-one grant would be used for this repair. Council is asked to approve the procurement of a repair to Maddox Boulevard culvert at Eel Creek.
Any motions?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Bott, to approve the two hundred thousand dollar fifty-year warranty repair to the Eel Creek culvert, and the funds will come from the town's annual U-one grant that would be used for this, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. You're up again, Ms. Ellen, I think, right?
I've read more than I've ever read in my life. Um, also at this November meeting, um, the committee considered a recommendation by staff to replace the recently failed culvert at BB Road in Thylon Gut. The culvert failed during a recent storm event and must be completely replaced. The proposed solution is to replace the existing thirty-year-old aluminum culvert with three four-by-six-feet precast box culverts. This design will increase the amount of flow in the creek and will strengthen the road crossing while providing decades of service. Funding would be from a variety of sources, including the delay of the Taylor Street rebuild project and the depletion of the remaining funds from the ARPA reserve account. Mr. Talbert will present a budget estimate of the cost involved. And of course, council is asked to approve this emergency replacement of the failed aluminum culvert at BB Road.
Mike?
Go ahead.
Um, with the remaining ARPA funds, will the remaining ARPA funds cover this entirely?
Unfortunately, we don't have all the numbers yet. Contractor we have contacted to help us with this estimate has not come through with his estimate for labor yet. We do have costs on materials, the major part of the materials, uh, and that is running at around a hundred thousand dollars for the precast culverts themselves. Unfortunately, we do not have an installation price at this time, uh, so I'm going to have to delay that. They were supposed to have it ready for us, uh, at the beginning of this week, and they've still not completed it. We've reached out to some other contractors in the meantime to get some help with this.
So do we need to wait on?
We need to, yes, we need to. This, in theory, what we will do is repurpose this as quickly as we possibly can, once we have a cost. Uh, but right now, uh, the plan to get enough money together to do this would be to, uh, delay the Taylor Street project and recoup those funds, um, to, um, probably repurpose or reallocate the, the local match funding from the dock downtown, uh, which is about fifty thousand dollars, uh, to take the remaining ARPA funds, which is in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and also to, uh, reallocate the balance of surplus funding, which we, uh, as you know, we didn't suspend, we did not allocate, we only allocated about fifty percent of predicted surplus this year, which is in the neighborhood of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We think at this point, we can get together about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. However, we do not have a contract of price yet on this. So until we actually have that price, we can't recommend moving forward with this.
But you are moving forward.
We are going.
We have to.
You got to.
We're down to one lane, so.
We're done, we're done to one lane, we have.
We're moving forward, we're just not.
Materials prices, we have shop drawings that we've already looked at and proved, yes, we're moving forward.
But we're going forward just at a rapid pace, we're just.
Maybe you haven't seen it, but there's a sign down there, there's no trucks to be using it now.
No, it's one lane, yeah.
No, it said, no trucks, only local.
But there's one lane, yeah.
Yeah. Are the four-by-six culvert, box culvert, are they one piece?
No.
I think they're not, or section?
No, actually, they're, they're four feet wide, six feet, uh, long. And there'll actually, uh, there'll actually be several pieces, they get bolted together, uh, and sealed, they're very tightly sealed.
And it increases construction cost, that's why I was asking that.
Yeah, so that, they're, in other words, you, they're easier to truck when they're that size, they're transport when they're that size, and they're easily to actually set when they're that size, so.
Well, the memo here is to, uh, council is asked to approve the emergency replacement of the failed aluminum culvert. And no matter what the price is, we got to fix it.
You got to fix it.
So.
I cannot give you a price at this particular time, though.
All right, so we will move forward for the council to approve the emergency replacement of the failed aluminum culvert at BB Road.
Make a motion.
Motion, Ms. Ellen?
Second.
Second, Mr. Savage, to move forward with the emergency replacement. Mike will get the prices, uh, as soon as he can. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, Mr. Savage, you're up with ordinance committee.
Uh, on November thirteenth, we met, uh, the ordinance committee met to consider a modification to the existing, uh, water ordinance, exempting qualified first-time homebuyers from the required availability. The water availability fee is charged for all new water services to offset cost of expanding the water treatment and distribution systems. Fee right now exceeds three thousand dollars for single-family residents. The original proposal contained an income cap tied to the average median income for the town of Shengi Teg. The committee decided that this cap should be removed and that first-time homeowners, uh, should be, uh, should qualify regardless of income level. Change this ordinance as attached, and I'm not sure we need to, to read all of that, but I can do so if you want to.
How about if you read F and G?
Okay, F and G.
Cause that's new.
It's a section, it comes out of section sixty-two dash fifty-seven, connection fees and availability fees. And, uh, part F, a qualified first-time homeowner, as the homeowner has defined in paragraph G, shall be charged service connection fees in accordance with this article that shall be exempt from all water availability fees. And G, a first-time homeowner for the purpose of this article shall be an individual who has not owned and occupied a principal residence in any jurisdiction in three years prior to this application. The town manager shall review and approve all applications, all applicants shall sign a statement providing that they will occupy the residence for not less than ten years following the approval of their application. Any violation of this residency requirements will result in the calculated availability fee becoming due and payable on demand.
Everybody understand that? All right, so council is asked to vote to accept the ordinance committee's recommendation to eliminate the availability fee for first-time homeowners per the attached ordinance modification.
I'll make motion.
Motion, Mr. Howard, second, Ms. Ellen, to adopt the, uh, first-time homeowners water availability fee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Mr. Savage, you're up again, wayside vendor modification.
Yeah, um, when I'm meeting on November thirteenth, uh, dealing with wayside vendor modification, the ordinance committee considered a change to the wayside vendor ordinance to require all businesses operating as a food truck to provide an additional parking space for each table or every four seats provided for dining on-site. After a thorough discussion on the topic, the committee voted to recommend this change to the council, the modification is attached. Is there any part of that modification that needs to be addressed?
Uh, I would read six point six in red.
Okay. This is, uh, this is part of the section two point one seven-nine, wayside vendors, section six point six, parking. Wayside vendors offering outdoor seating areas as defined in this section shall provide one additional off-street parking space for every four seats or per each table, whichever is greater.
Everybody understand? All right, council is asked to vote to accept the recommendation of the committee to modify the ordinance requiring additional parking with the addition of seating to the site.
Oh, I make a motion?
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Bott, second, Mr. McCombe, to move forward with the recommendation of the committee to modify the ordinance. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Where are we at here? All right, Mr. Talbert, Consider Draft Leave Policy.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, if you'll give me just a second, I will make the policy up.
Was asked to prepare a draft of a policy which will allow, uh, employees to sell back some of their leave. Um, would you like me to read the policy or just paraphrase or?
You paraphrase.
Okay, so the purpose of the policy is to provide eligible town employees an option to convert some of the leave that they can't use efficiently to cash. Um, to be eligible, you'd have to be a full-time, regular employee of the town, has successfully completed your first year, uh, of continuous full-time service, and you have to have an annual leave balance that meets or exceeds a minimum threshold, in this case, it would be, uh, a hundred and twenty hours. Uh, we will allow you to sell forty hours back at your regular rate. This does not include, uh, overtime or any stipends or otherwise, it would just be at your regular rate. Um, and you must, after the sale of your leave, have at least eighty hours of balance leave on the books. In other words, you'd have to have a hundred and twenty hours to sell any back. We'd let you sell forty, no more, no less. Uh, this would be helpful in the instance where, uh, an employee has use or lose leave in which they cannot carry more than two hundred and eighty hours on the books right now. So if they had, uh, that much more that they were getting ready to lose, uh, they could sell forty hours back to the town as long as they ended up with eighty after the sale. Um, this would be once a year, at the end of the calendar year, when, uh, which is when we look at everybody's leave. I've been over the rate, uh, there is a request procedure, they have to request and have to be approved by a, uh, a mechanic specialist who does payroll, and she knows what everybody's leave is, has a, a canning of everyone's leave. Um, it would be paid off in the final payroll of the calendar year, which happens in December. Um, and reasons for denial of their request would be budget limitations and employee's failure to meet the eligibility criteria, uh, crit, criteria or an incomplete or late submission. Um, upon separation of employment, this policy would not be valid. Uh, the regular separation policy would, uh, would govern any separation. You're paid for no more than two hundred and eighty hours, um, which you have on the books, and that clearly states that. Um, the program will be reviewed by the town manager, especially in the first several years on a year-to-year basis, to see that we are, everyone is complying and that, that it, and, uh, for more, um, more appropriately, the town manager would be reviewing this year-to-year to see what the budgetary impact of that sale would be. Currently, we have, I believe, uh, sixteen employees that would be eligible this year, who have more than, uh, a hundred and twenty hours on the books. Um, seven of those employees currently exceed two hundred and eighty hours and are working on getting those numbers down before the end of the calendar year. They've all been notified, as they are each year, that they have, uh, hours on the books they need to, uh, to whittle down to two hundred and eighty. Uh, so the fiscal impact, just using round numbers, this year, if all sixteen employees would sell back their, I believe it's sixteen, but if all of the eligible employees would sell back their time this year, it would be a budgetary impact of around fifteen thousand dollars to the town this year. Of course, that varies depending on who the actual employees are, because they're, they're all paid at different rates. And it would also vary year-to-year depending on how many employees were eligible.
If this, uh, if council approves to do this, could this be implemented for this year?
It could be, yes. I've spoken with payroll, it could be done this year. It's a little, little pushed at this point, but we could get it done this year.
Any discussion from council?
I like the idea, I'd like to see it started at the beginning of the next leave tracking year, which I'm assuming is January first of twenty-six.
Correct.
Just for planning and fairness to the employees, knowing, you know, a lot of them are probably trying to use all their leave up in anticipation they wouldn't be able to carry it over. It's kind of a last-minute deal here. And also, we haven't got it budgeted. And I think we're trying to use our budget surplus on Eel Creek at the current time, I believe. But I mean, I like the policy, I think it's a good policy, you know, it keeps, fair policy. I think it's a good policy, you know, keeps fair policy.
Any other discussion? All right, so need a motion to consider the draft leave policy?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented by Town Mayor Talbert.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCoone, second by Mr. Savage to, uh, approve the draft leave policy that Mr. Talbert has put forth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. All right, mayor, council, and comments. Mr. Savage, I'll start with you.
I have the comments. I had it wrote down by last night, Walter, let's look at it.
I'm sure you can come up with it.
I wanted to thank the players and the coaches of the Shingitig Kings, the Danny Moore Memorial, um, uh, let me out.
Bowl tournament.
Bowl tournament. And it was just, it was fun to watch. It was fun how they put their heart and souls in it. I think we've got three players, I think, who are going to an All-Star game in Arcalama from that team. And they were very proud of the days players that deserved their positions too. And, but I think, uh, and like I said, one of our own was the, uh, uh, put hearts and times with the kids. And anybody that takes time, work for the kids, take time to do it. Kids are still great. I promise you. And, uh, I thank the people that still, uh, putting their heart and soul into kids and, and like I said, and getting, seeing those rewards, uh, is amazing. Just commend them all, players and, and the coaches.
Mr. McCoone?
Uh, first, I can give condolences to our community center director, um, on the loss of our mother, and also condolences to the family. Um, appreciate everybody's comments tonight. It's great when people come out and participate, um, in our meetings. Um, we certainly like to see that. And then, uh, to echo, uh, what Gene Lane was saying, congratulations to the team and their win. Uh, it's always great to see Shingitig kids do cr- do well.
Oh, Happy Thanksgiving, Walter.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, just piggyback on what Billy said. Uh, just wanted to put four condolences to the families. It's a hard time of year. We're getting into the holiday season for anybody to lose anybody. And, and Mr. George, and, uh, bugs and the group, that, that's, they'll be missed. You know, it, it's hard. There ain't many Shingitigers left, and we're losing them fast. So, uh, just, uh, same thing, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Bott?
Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Ellen?
Same thing, thank you all.
Um, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and, uh, for, for speaking on behalf of, of the issues that you have. Donna, you are not wrong. We, we have things that, that need to be taken care of. Um, Mr. Bott, not, I think the last meeting, uh, even said, you know, we, we've got to get some of this stuff done. And, uh, some stuff has been worked on behind the scenes that are not out there, um, but there are things that are being worked on. There are things that need to be put forth, uh, as a priority. Um, so thank you for bringing that to the forefront, uh, just to keep us on our toes. Cause it's, for me, as, as sitting in this seat, it can be quite embarrassing when things aren't done. And that's the way I feel. Um, uh, we, we're very blessed. You know, the town's in a, in a good situation, a good place, probably the best, uh, financially that it's been in, in many, many years, um, that we're even able to even think about, uh, have a notion of a thought of maybe purchasing this property. So that, that speaks volumes for how the town has evolved and working, uh, the way it is, um, without the need to raise taxes as far as, uh, real estate and, and personal property, which you all know doesn't bring in much anyway. But, um, w- we've got a, a good group, um, from the top to the bottom that are working very hard for this town. And, uh, it, it's, it's an honor and a privilege to sit up here with, with this group, um, that is, uh, you know, got, got projects and, and, uh, thoughts in, in the forefront. Um, we've, we're all a close-knit community. Y'all know that. Um, Mary Esther, the loss of Mary Esther's mom, you know, a lot of people knew her and the joy that she brought to everybody. And, and losing Mr. George today, um, I know that, that Jay's dad and, and Mr. George are really, really good friends. And it's, it's tough, you know? Uh, people that, that we've known our whole lives and, you know, going away from here. And, and it's tough. But at the same time, I'm so thankful that we have them. And we, we've enjoyed their, their time with us and enjoying our community and everything. Thanksgiving is upon us. We're gonna have a lot of visitors here, hopefully Thanksgiving weekend. And, uh, if you're able to spend time with your family and enjoy your time with your family, hold it tight because it can all be gone just like that. So I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and thank you again for being here. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Second.